Hi, my name is Eric Edesa. I'm going into the education field to become a teacher after high school. I think I'm pretty confident that I'm gonna go to Adrian College to be a cross-country indoor trainer and chartered runner. And for the longest time, I thought I was gonna be an engineer, just kind of like being in Mr. Farrell's room, especially in STEM classes with like really technical and meticulous. I've always enjoyed doing like circuitry woodworking. But it wasn't until last year, I had two free study halls and Mr. Farrell kind of did a good job with that academy for me. Because he had a lot going on in his small classroom. So definitely a good team, right? He had dirt bikes, saws, two-by-fours like all over the room. He was like, "On this side of the room, there are ten kids over here." And he was like, "If you have free time, you can come into the classroom and just help me organize the students and stuff like that." So that's really when I found out that I wanted to teach. I went in there and I helped kids like do woodworking, 3D printing, different things like that. Mr. Farrell said, "You kind of have a really good knack for this." I was like, "I think you're right," and I kind of enjoyed it. And through this class, I've gotten the opportunity to job shadow this establishment here at the school. And I just kind of like really like it like this. Being around those secretaries, talking to them about basketball, football. I saw them in the Aces football, I see some of them at their basketball games. And it's just really an experience.
Hi, I'm David Taylor and I want to just kind of become an electrical linesman. I really knew what I wanted to do, up until the beginning of this year, where my cousins, they both were, they're both linesmen. They kind of really got me into it. And Mr. Farrell brought me to get in the job shadowing with places like Holy Potomac, looking at health+ electric and whatnot. So that's what I want to do.
I'm a part of, I want to give some stuff to the sales. I was with Matt Gilford the last couple of Fridays. And we talked about how to deal with customers, what to do with those kinds of sales.
My name is Anthony Allen and I want to go to college. Preferably like I don't know if you've ever been somewhere close to me telling me to do this business major. And I worked for Terry Gilford and the earlier, you know, what he does on day-to-day basis. And I liked what he did and thought it was a nice world to be in.
Hi, I'm Michael Lona. I'm coming off a kind of cool, pretty, uh, becoming a pilot. And so this is what I've done here, uh, in my pilot's license. And now it's also working for my senior project. And so they let us learn my work now and it's a lot of help. And this class is just a new, like, good opportunity to get someone that's more experienced over, trying to figure out what's in my passions are. And so I'm also doing an internship with Caleb Savage. And so I've been able to actually shop and it's kind of learning a little bit more about that.
So five different folks with five different stories. So what I'd like you to do now is we're just gonna do a very informal meet and greet until the morning starts. So there are some snacks that are over there, so help yourself with some snacks. There's water, there's coffee, if you're free to make a coffee. And these gentlemen are gonna show you some of the projects that they create. Mill around and enjoy your time together. It's a fellowship time.
That's good. What I'm doing, I kind of figured it's awesome. The switches are really good. Because everyone is like your buddy. But when you're like circuitry, you know, you're trying to spark the circuit on one. I think that's like a garage door switch.
Now, I have those news.
You're gonna make a pitch?
Are you putting together?
Uh, yeah, we built them all. What am I doing?
Are you gonna do your mini pitch?
Uh...
Think you just did four of your favorite things during Mr. Farrell's class.
Favorite thing in Mr. Farrell's class is probably the openness, openness, uh, from him for any ideas. Because we can really pitch any idea to him and then, I mean, he almost never says no to us. And as long as we're showing progress and getting stuff done, he loves it. So that's probably my favorite thing throughout this class.
And your favorite project that you've done so far?
Uh, favorite project? I built a, it's something personal, but I guess, so I got to install a radio and speakers in a truck I'm building. And then I also got to build a like center council system for like storage and this kind of deal.
And what have you done with Paul and Paul?
Uh, I just went and job shadowed with their operations manager, Tim Bowley, the, uh, last, two Fridays ago. And he just introduced me to everybody in the work area, the actual building. And then we went out and visited different crews, asked them what they were doing. They showed us how to do, showed me how to do certain jobs and whatnot. So that was basically our entire day.
As you say, and they'll give you a great opportunity, this is our solar power and wind power.
Yep.
Because the turbines, you see, they've almost tripled in six years, the turbines?
Uh, I'm not sure, but probably, yeah.
We're Paul and Paul, they're their electric co-op, so, um...
Yeah.
And Anthony, what do you, what have you enjoyed out of Mr. Farrell's?
Um, I've enjoyed really being able to let my creativity flow in the class and just be able to do what I want. Like, I've done a wide variety of projects such as this tool cart over there. And then I salvaged a rusted out bench over there. I'm working on getting water in here with the school, and just doing that over there. And just lots of different other things that I've done in the class, it's just been very fun.
Did you ever think you'd get to do things like this in high school?
Uh, no, I did not think I'd be able to do this in high school. I mean, I knew STEAM was, uh, like a thing and all that. And I had some STEAM classes with Mr. Farrell in the past, but it was never nothing like this out in the barn. It was always just in the little classroom.
And how has it changed from STEM to STEAM?
Um, I think it's really changed in a way because...
First of all, how about for listeners, would she...
Technology, education, and mathematics. And they added the art side into it. So basically, you're allowed to, like I said earlier, let your creativity flow and kind of put your own touch on a lot of the things that you do in the class and just make your mark.
Excellent, thank you. See, I told you it would be fairly painless, I promised.
My name is Eric Edesa.
And what we're doing tonight is we're just getting a little information about each student. And we know you did a little bit of an intro, but what we're gonna ask you is, what have you enjoyed most about your classes from Mr. Farrell, or helping out Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Farrell to me, um, he's a really good teacher and he's always been, uh, like, up to date with the things that are like happening in my current life. But deeper than that, I'd say Mr. Farrell's taught me a lot of life lessons personally. You know, when I was younger and I first had Mr. Farrell, I think even just working on my projects, I'd always have one angle of looking at things. And if it didn't work, I'd just start over and scrap whatever I was doing. But being around him more and more, I started to realize that there's so many different ways to view things, so many different solutions to different problems. And Mr. Farrell's always been a good person and if I've ever had trouble with anything, he's always like, "There's gotta be another way around." Life's just not in a straight line, it goes all over.
How many times did Edison have to work on the right light bulb before he got one that worked?
Yeah.
Or was it 2000 and some?
Yeah, it's funny that you mention that because one of my projects that I've been working on for the longest time that I kind of wish showing people around here is my lightsaber that I've been making. I'm a really big Star Wars fan, so...
Want to go shower?
Yeah, I can grab it.
Go ahead and shower. Go after the whole thing.
This is kind of my rough prototype here, but it comes on, it lights up, uh, you can spin it, whatever you want. It's pretty cool. Um, the next thing I'm working on doing is putting sound in it. But a lot of people don't know, this is the third lightsaber that I've built in Mr. Farrell's class. And the first time I built it, he's like, "It's alright, let's try again." The second time I built it, I had struggles with, uh, all the little circuits and the tiny handle. And I, this year, I had a lot of free time. I kind of been knocking out much senior project stuff, I had nothing to do in the workshop. And I was like, "I think I'm gonna try the lightsaber again." He's like, "It's alright." He was like, "You didn't fail at building two lightsabers, you just learned how not to build two lightsabers."
Or what wasn't the most effective place to do it?
So definitely, um, he's a good motivator. A lot of times, he's always talks about being positive. And every Monday, we have our Monday meeting. And he's been reading us this book, uh, it's called Fred. And Fred's a cool character. He talks about, uh, how people in life tend to just move on and not think, uh, what others want. And in the book, it starts off telling the story about a mailman and a lady. And the lady, every day, had to be at her house at 3:30 to get her mail. And one day, she didn't make it on time. So the mailman, uh, left the papers for her and wrote a message to her on a note saying, "You don't always have to be on time. Uh, I come here every day, you don't have to wait for me." And it was just kind of like a little sentimental message that he left her. And he didn't have to go out of his way to do that, obviously. And he didn't have to go out of his way to put the mail where it needed to be, but he took the extra time to do that. So in the book, it categorizes him as a Fred. And one of the other stories we read today was, um, there was a poor lady sitting outside of a coffee shop. And she couldn't afford a cup of coffee. So she just stood out there and sat and watched people enjoy cups of coffee inside. So a businessman walked past and he offered her a cup of coffee. And she was scrambling through her bag trying to find the money to pay him back. And he said, "It's okay, it's on me." So that guy eventually becomes a Fred. So he kind of motivates us to become friends. And I think that's a good lesson that we learned, which is pretty cool.
Which I'm assuming from your intro is part of why you're considering education.
Yeah, um, I was never like really into teaching. And if you would've asked me like my freshman year, if you would've been a teacher, I'd have told you you were crazy. I couldn't see a little kid's face. The more I'm around him, the more, uh, the more pleasure it brings me. I enjoy like teaching them just small things. A lot of them have like such simple, such simple problems with such an easy solution.
We'll let you go, it sounds like you're being called.
Alright, good evening. I'd like to call this, uh, meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Villas Board of Education to order. Roll call, please. Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazra?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Welcome to our public visitors. Thanks for coming. And we have a presentation on deck from Mr. Farrell.
Thank you and thank you for coming. I appreciate you giving the students an opportunity to speak to you. And I think one of the things we've been working on is the importance of their story and how their story fits into career development. And so as we developed curriculum, I took some of my own medicine and I went through some of the process the kids are going in, are going through. And I said, "What is my vision this year?" Well, it's to recognize that each student has talents and gifts. And I think we say that, but when we actually take the time to step back and go, "Alright, we're not worried about grades this quarter. What we're worried about is who you are, what your values are, and what your talents and gifts are. And how that melds into a community and into your future careers." So that's a difficult task for a teacher, to sit there and go, "I'm gonna find this kid's talents and gifts." And so, you know, how do we do that? And then we talked about, well, we have to have a mission that goes along with our vision. And my mission for this year is simply to serve with joy. And that can be a difficult task to accomplish as well. When there's so much in our culture that brings us down to say, "You know what, when I'm at the lowest of my low point, those words have to come into the back of my mind." And so what I did is required every student to also go through a process of hopefully figuring out a little bit of who they are and going through a little bit of a mission passport. So I just pulled a couple of students' journals, so hopefully they did a good job because I didn't read them very much in advance. So this student came up with their core values. And he said his core values are faith, family, friends, and happiness. And then he came up with a vision to make the people around the world, or to make the people, to make, to make the people and world around me as great as possible. And then he came up with his mission to spread the gospel to people who are in need, to help others with all that I can and to be the best version of myself every single day. Um, and his ID, kind of his, okay, what's gonna get you up in the morning when you're, you're not able to do that, was to be a great role model for other people and have others want to be like me. So then they have to come up with an image and a quote that kind of defines that for them. This student wrote, "Hard work beats talent when talent fails to work hard." And so each student walked through that process a little bit, and so did I, recognizing, and it helped me to recognize each kid that walks in here has a story. And those five words, "You are not like me, they're not all like me." And they don't all fit into a box, they're unique. And they have unique talents and treasures to offer. And so I wanted to give you a little bit of a program overview, what actually happens when you walk out into the barn. So you can see from the screen that we have a number of different classes offered. Some of them are elective and some of them are required courses. There are two STEAM 10 courses, so sophomores come out here and they go through a variety of curriculum that includes everything from CPR training to developing individual projects, to woodworking, to 3D printing, laser engraving, the list goes on. And I actually have a map, anybody wants to see exactly what we do out here. Uh, then we have some sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade classes that come out either quarterly or every nine weeks. An advanced STEAM class, and those were the six boys that were out here, where six of nine take the advanced STEAM class. Some students had trouble scheduling, so they may only come out two periods a day, some come out one period a day, and some spend three periods a day out here working more in an internship. And then we do some special programming with K through four students. I think we're doing the Elf Workshop, I love doing those days, those are some of my favorite. And the kids help with those, so they're gonna get the hot glue guns out, I think Wednesday or Thursday, I'm not sure. I'll look them up some days. And they're going to be helping them glue some ornaments together. So total, we have about 138 students that are walking through the building, or through the, this building on a daily basis. Our yearly total, because we have quarter and semester long courses, is about 217 different students that'll walk through here at some point, not counting like those special days that we do. And so obviously, I could talk a lot about it, but to make it visual and to see some images of that, I think will give you a better idea of what goes on out here. So I just have a short, two-minute video clip with some photos. I noticed I didn't take enough photos this quarter, so I think I'm gonna have to assign somebody as the class photographer. So if you'll go ahead and take a look, just a few images. There's as much variety in the student as there is the project. Uh, sixth graders did the majority of the concrete work that's in the sidewalk, so definitely variety there. So just to give you a little bit of an update on the building and where that stands. Uh, the original estimate on the building was about $120,000 when you look at furnishing. We originally thought we were going to end up putting a sprinkler system in, and that was the majority of the cost. But as we looked at the Ohio Revised Code, we discovered that because we're detached from the building, we have fewer than, I think, 200 students in the building at a time. There are some exemptions from that sprinkler system and we met all of the criteria for those exemptions. So that's money that doesn't need to be spent. As far as the furnishings are concerned, the kids built most of it. So the boys that were walking you around, if you look, they're their work benches, they put it all together. And I think it turned out just wonderfully. And so we, we've lowered those costs. Right now, there's about $3,800 in new lighting. And the old halogen bulbs in here, it just wasn't efficient. And everything looked yellow under those lights. But we set it bright enough for us to be able to do the work we need to do. And then a huge shout-out goes to SMTA and Eric Bassett. They were able to run internet lines out here for $1,400. I've worked with folks that run that equipment. I'm not sure they paid for the gas, and that $1,400, I know that's expensive. I think they had four guys working out here for an entire day, and that's all they charged us. So Eric has definitely been huge in making things happen and getting the best price on items that we needed to make everything work. Uh, to finish the, the project, we do need to be able to put in an electrical wall back around those panels. So the architects are drawing that up. And so hopefully that will be in, I suppose the architects will, but we can get contractors and we're gonna put that wall in. And we also are required by our coal station, which originally we thought would have to be a wireless station. And now we've discovered we can just wire because of the SMTA doing their work. They ran a conduit for us and we can tap into the building's existing system. So I don't think it will be as expensive as the estimate. Eric thought it would be about half of the price for that system. So there's probably $10,000 to $12,000 worth of additions that need to be finished before the building is, is what I would say, is a finished classroom now. As far as some of the needs that we have out here, hopefully we'll do a little redesign over Christmas break. Dust collection is a huge part of, and just getting air circulating out here is a big deal. So hopefully that art table that's in the back will kind of be moving up here where the cookies are sitting. And we're going to put workbench in and hopefully a dust collection system back there. So all of the power tools we're using can be safely mounted to that and maybe shuffle the dust for filtering system. Uh, water is also, and we made it work, and honestly, the kids have done a great job of going in and watering the water in the cafeteria for us. And actually, one of our other units is going to be on a better STC system for us. Um, they make some stainless steel systems, so we'll look stainless steel, but as a connection, but those are rather expensive. So some of our other goals and just needs that we have with the program, there are always equipment needs. So hopefully we'll be able to put in some CNC machinery. And they make a really interesting vertical CNC machine that you can just set a piece of plywood in and you can set the computer and it'll just cut everything out for you. Uh, a milling machine will go in as soon as we have the workspace of that milling machine so that they can work with some things like aluminum. Um, and they're just updating, we're constantly updating our robotics and that type of technology and disposables. So we also have a need for teacher training and development so that we can get our students their technology endorsement and hopefully a manufacturing seal on their diploma, they have to get so many points for that. And if they take CPR, they get, I think, two points for that, I think they need a total of six, that one's changes. So I'm not sure I'm up on those current rules for that. Um, but hopefully I'll be able to get, that I already have done. Hopefully I'll be able to get the OSHA training here shortly. And each one of those trainings our students goes for counts as a point as soon as I'm certified to teach it. And then making connections with some of the colleges and universities to see what they can offer and help us through that process as well. Uh, Ms. Wyman has been a huge part of educating me on what needs to be done. She definitely deserves a shout-out as well. Um, she's a very talented guidance counselor. And so, um, and then when you look at that just continued vision and support, that where do we go from here? We're out here, we're started. I think we've got a great facility for kids to work in, it's continuing that vision. And I think that, that really needs to be that community, industry kind of collaboration plan that we need to start working on. Hopefully we'll be able to have some funding to do a job spark. You know, Junior Achievement does that in Port Wayne and I was able to go and witness some of what they were doing. And they were not only bringing industry in, those industries, instead of just giving a bouncy ball or, you know, a sticker to the kids, they had stations set up for each kid to say, "This is what we do." And they had a little activity for the kids to do that went along with their business. And Parpy brought their mobile trailer, the, uh, the Sheriff's Department brought a, a crime scene investigation. I just was able to see a lot of neat things happening through that. I think wouldn't it be neat if we offered that here with just our local businesses? Said, you know, "Let's get five companies out of our own community, provide them a little bit of funding and say, 'Come up with something for our kids to do. You come up with a project, we'll support it and make sure the kids are here.'" We have the perfect space to do that. And now we can clear this room in about 20 minutes and have the entire barn ready for those companies to come in and do something. So, you know, I think that's part of the vision. Um, career development that goes beyond the classroom and job shadowing. And this is where the presentation comes full circle. You were able to hear some of their stories. And every kid has a unique story, if you were to look through their journals and how I assess them, and what they want to do with their careers. I think a part of my vision is saying, "What can we offer you?" You know, David Taylor wants to go and be a linesman. What can we do for David Taylor to promote that in him? And you saw, we've gotten into some shadowing experiences. And hopefully this summer, he'll be able to do an internship in Bryan, it will count as a summer job. But I think we have to creatively think, how do we make it work for just this kid? Or for Michael Blenna, who wants to be a pilot, and I get on a plane with Michael Blenna, he's a sharp kid. And, uh, you know, how do we support that? And so that's, that goes with each kid and has to be very targeted. So I think that career development that's now that you've done, and we do a good job with job shadowing here, now that you've done that, well, what's next, needs to be the question. So, and, and I think that involves work-study opportunities. You know, uh, Michael has spent his entire time with Caleb Savage. Uh, some of these students have spent their entire time with what I would consider expert teachers. And looking at the evaluations from those teachers, I think it's a powerful experience for both the teacher and the student. And then, you know, post-high school career development. You know, what does that look like and how do we support it? So I think that's kind of what the vision, uh, looks like. So I showed you a few of the images of the classroom and kind of said, you know, "This is a little bit where my vision and where I'm coming from in the future. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask me now that you've talked to the students and you've gotten a little bit of a visual of what happens out here? Certainly I could spend two or three hours talking to you about what students do and I'm very proud of them. And the kids that were here did a tremendous job. Some of them have overcome significant obstacles to get where they're at, um, today. And so I'm very proud of the work that they've been able to do, um, out here and my getting to know them. The three periods a day, you get to know somebody in that amount of time. And so, um, if you have any questions after talking to them or any questions after seeing any of that video, I would love to answer them for you."
I don't have a question, I just appreciate the fact that, um, we don't always realize where these kids, kids come from. And single, single parent families and lower income families don't always have the opportunity to expose their kids to some of the most basic things like power tools, things that a lot of us take for granted. So for you to be able to expose a wide variety of kids to a wide variety of tools and experiences and opportunities, even if it's as small as using a power tool, that can collect something in them for them to say, "Hey, look, I look like this, I'm really good at this, this is what I want to pursue." And so I'm just so grateful that we can provide that for those kids.
Yeah, we actually started doing skill practice when I was in AT. And you know, we do the learn about it and then the skill practice and then the assessment. And so some of our skill practices with, with the power tools are literally, "This is the drill and this is how you put the chuck into the, or how you put a bit into a drill." And so, yeah, learning the basics on power tools.
And a lot of our kids don't have opportunities to do that outside of school. So it's awesome that we can provide that here.
Are there any questions?
Again, not a question, but a comment. I'm just, I graduated 10 years ago and I, I was always kind of sad that I missed out on shop class and all that. So I'm so happy to see this coming back and being a part of STEAM's lives. I love working with my hands and I would've done anything I could have to get out of the classroom and there and been out here and working out here.
That's part of, I'm glad you brought that up, that's what I was gonna say, is like, we started at the infancy stages of this. It wasn't that we're trying to keep kids from going to four-county. It wasn't that we're trying to keep kids from going to ABT. Because Tony Neitzwander says this himself, he goes, "If you know what you want to do and you want to go to four-county, go to four-county." He goes, "We're looking for those kids that aren't sure what they want to do, and that's what we want." But they're missing out on that. You know, as a dad, I had this conversation with my son recently. It's like, when I was in high school, I took industrial arts, CAD, drafting, welding, that's what we... what we took. And now we have no opportunity there for those kids that are still thousands of dollars looking for some sort of skill or technical college afterwards. So that was the goal of this, was to provide what we were missing for, again, that niche of students.
And even, I think, especially at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you're exposing them to things so that they can go on to four counties, that they can go on to AT and know that they're going to like it, know that they have an interest in it and they can have some place to go.
Yeah, that equation is complicated for every kid, it's an individual type of thing, motivating them to do those types of things. And for some kids, it does fit them to come out here.
And a shout out also to Mr. Farrell because it takes the right person to be creative and come up with these ideas. And if you come out here during the day, it's refreshing. I mean, I love the industrial look of everything and to see the kids all, you know, working on different stuff and they know what they're doing and where they're at and it's a good feeling when you walk into the room, you know what I mean? It's a, it's a great place to be. So thanks, Mr. Farrell, for starting this. And I know that as we develop this and go from year to year and keep adding things, that I don't see any reason why it wouldn't continue to grow, so.
Yeah, I've been most challenged as I have ever been in 20 years of education, but it's a good challenge. So, and I've learned more in the last quarter, I think, than, than in the 20 years past. And I learned a lot from those kids that you were just able to speak with, so.
I don't have a question either, but I love the personal contact and the personal interest in the, just that personal connection with these kids. For some of these kids, there isn't somebody that they really connect with during the day and that is so valuable to them. And for them to be able to say, for you to say to them, I have a mission, I have a project, I want this, what do you want? And then to take the time to help them develop it, I just think that is.
It is about, we talked about passion, but what we're really making is a very powerful thing. All of those boys a month ago, when Mr. Farrell came in a few weeks ago, so a moment of honesty. When I, I said, you know, I'd like you to come to the board meeting, all of them unanimously said, no, we are not doing that. We like you, but we don't like you that much that we're going to come and, and they were, obviously they were a little bit on the negative side as well. But we have a Monday meeting, every Monday where we sit down and we talk about career development, we talk about the projects that we're going to do for the week and we have some conversation. And so last Monday, I kind of reminded them, I said, okay, I really need you to come to the board meeting, will you do it? And they got their phones out and started looking at their calendars going, yeah, we can do that. My jaw hit the table, like, who are you and how did you change in four weeks? And so it's a good thing, so definitely they deserve a lot of credit for the strides that they've made over the last half a year, for sure.
Mr. Farrell, I wanted to take a minute, I was approached by Mr. Golden.
Yes.
Dave Golden that called me and we have had several conversations over, over the last few months. And I'd like to just turn this over to you, Dave, for a second.
Thank you. My name's Dave Golden with GenX Solar. We are utility-scale solar developers in the community. It's a long process to get these off the ground, so we'd like to be involved early in communities and this is a great example of what you're doing. So I'd like to present the check tonight. It's to the scheme program generally, so you can spend it on anything you need in here for $2,000 and it's my pleasure to bring this. Thank you. Before I forget, I gotta give you the real check, so. It's not.
The photograph one is nice, but let's.
Thank you very much. And before I forget, I know where this goes, so.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it. Thank you so much and I know we'll be in touch.
Thank you guys, we really appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I think that's a great example of what our community has to offer and, you know, I didn't approach him, he approached me and wanted to make a donation and wanted to know what we could put that towards and of course with this new program and everything, it made perfect sense, so he was very, very excited about it, which gave me the idea then to just, let's just have the board meeting out here and then we can, I knew Mr. Farrell, he'd be all over with having kids come and doing a presentation and I think it's been a good thing. So, Mr. Farrell, will you do me a favor though? Turn the heat up one notch. Thanks.
And while you're doing that, one more thing. Thank you, thank you so much for providing such an enriching environment for these kids. It's very powerful and that's often overlooked, so thank you.
Okay, all right. Technology report.
I'm going to have to be pretty impressive after that.
You guys, oh.
I don't know about impressive. So, things have been going fairly well from beginning here, I think this is for board meeting, I know I've been at things. We've had an ongoing issue with Wi-Fi though. And the new facility had 19 new access points that were purchased with the facility, so that was like, they were purchased in 2020. The rest of the building has Wi-Fi access points that were purchased about eight years ago. And so I've been on support with Maraki who is our, who provides the access points. And I found out that our access points through the building have pretty much reached the end of updates, so we can no longer get firmware updates. We're surviving right now. We'll have a page lady on, I've been TV tracks so that I could say, here Maraki, these are the ones that we, classes have problems with and things like that. When I have a teacher call and say, hey, we can't get online, we just reboot their access point, I can do that remotely and they're back online in like 30 seconds. Of course, you know, teachers aren't happy because they're spending this time, they're not able to come back or whatever. So E-Rate offers category two funding where they will pay 60% of hardware replacement. So I put that, started that process with E-Rate and bids started coming like two weeks ago. And so I'm, we have to be out for bid with E-Rate for 28 days and then this is for funding year that starts July 1. So basically we're going to have to kind of like limp through the year, which really is, is not horrible. Teachers just call, we restart, they're back online, but it takes them down for two to three minutes. But, the new ones, because we will be actually the new generation of Wi-Fi, so the most modern generation of Wi-Fi, so they should get us through. It looks like, when we first moved into the building in 2008, it was about eight years later that we had to replace all the Wi-Fi, so it looks like Wi-Fi equipment has about an eight-year, and they probably do that on purpose, you know? But then again, from when we moved into the building to what, 15, 16 years later, the speed of the Wi-Fi and the amount that the Wi-Fi handle has probably gone and increased three, four, or five times. So it's probably about an eight-year cycle with the next generation of Wi-Fi. But the big thing that I really want to wait till July because that's when this E-Rate funding comes through and they'll pay their 60% of it installed. I'm still getting some bids and right now my bids, and it's crazy, some of these companies, they're ranging from like a span of 20,000 to 30,000. One company will be 20,000 less with the exact same equipment than another. So I'm still going through all the bidding process, I'm still waiting for more bids to come in. Then once we hit, it'll be next funding year, but we can get things and get through this limping period and then be back though. I haven't rebooted these access points.
Especially you and I have had several conversations about this, and I asked him to pressure the forums, that we're pressured later, that we're talking about short-term and long-term goals. This is definitely a short one that you need to, you can take care of so that we're functioning properly as far as.
It's just amazing how dependent on Wi-Fi we've become. And Mr. Farrell talked about, we had so many different ideas of how we could get Wi-Fi out here. And then tech, I think we got a bid from Wallace to bore the fiber from here to the building and it was going to be upgraded to see, it's basically like, $30,000 they were charging us. And so then we were kind of brainstorming and I was talking to Eric, I'm like, how about SMTA? And so Eric made those phone calls and instead of spending $50,000 to get fiber out here, we spent 14. And what, it was probably about three weeks or so you had to do without Wi-Fi out here and so it really crippled a lot of the things that Mr. Farrell would do. But then once we got the Wi-Fi out here, got that fiber placed, within a day, that guy all set up out here, he has one of the new access points, so I don't think he's had it. So just kind of going to put that out there and look forward to like July 1, if I could be a little bit of a technology bill coming your way. And I'm really hoping with supply issues and chain, supply chain issues, so if we can't order towards July 1, I'm hoping that doesn't push the equipment into the schoolyard, hoping they can get here within a reasonable.
Approximately what do you think about share project?
I'm thinking just with the numbers that I see, we could save $15,000 and go with the current generation, which Matt and I have talked and that's kind of, it seems silly to do that, where we could spend that extra $15, so the district share will probably be about $40,000. It's looking like for my lowest bid right now. My highest bid for the exact same was $150,000. I'm like, this is crazy, I just don't get how they can be so fast with that. But, so that's about what it's looking like unless I get another bid that's surprising me in this moment.
Can you remind me, what if we do, what if we had to upgrade and, did we upgrade the cameras?
Oh, see, that was off Eric.
Yeah, but something with the Wi-Fi gap point.
I think so because the cameras are not wireless, they are all wired directly to the posits, so.
Do we have to like upgrade something with the, our server or something to handle all the cameras? We did it, oh, right now. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it wasn't that it had to have to do with the internet necessarily?
Oh, Wi-Fi. Oh, I'm just trying to remember because I live just a small part of that, I don't remember anything.
It's in the, it was stored on the chair, I just forget, I forget exactly what that's called.
You know, for some reason, um.
Oh, they were, they were actual boxes, they were boxes about this long and they slide into a, I don't, I'm not a tech guy, but.
I'm just saying, okay, so the cameras, I believe you had to put switches in that all, keep the cameras plugged into. So I think that was just part of the bid, I don't think I purchased the, the switch that the cameras.
So the total cost though is around $100,000, is what it's looking like with E-Rate picking up $60,000?
$60,000, 60%. I wish, if we could get our free reduced numbers up just a little bit, then E-Rate would pay for 70%, but it's hard to get those applications back, it's obviously.
Any questions for Mr. Shaker on that?
Do we have enough people that if we could get their applications back, we'd beat that 70%?
Yeah, it's hard because I don't know the magic formula, but I think because we were at 70% for the first 10 years of E-Rate and then all of a sudden something happened, I think our numbers went down with the number returned and then all of a sudden rolling in 60% for like the last.
Well, I think the feds are charged with the E-Rate program, I think part of what happened is parameters changed. So the percentages, when you use that percentage here, you get a reimbursement here, that you sort of change. That was part of it and then of course our numbers have fluctuated and changed also, so I think it was a combination. Because could we have possibly had 80% at one time, early on?
I can't.
I have seen districts before with a.
Yeah, I think 80% really part of it, did that. All right, thank you, Mr. Shaker.
Principal reports, you'd like to go first.
I'll go. Actually, I'm just going to take a moment to highlight our staff here this month. And I'm going to probably read most of it just so I don't miss anything, but there are just a lot of individuals that come together during this Christmas season just to make it magical for our A-12 students. And during this time, our school counselors and school social worker are in overdrive working to assist our families that are in high need. Our staff is top-notch. They have been flexible to work hard to make this month just a magical experience for our kiddos. Special thanks to the ideas, efforts, and time that Shelley Weatherhead and Erin Montgomery especially has put forth. So I, I guess I just wanted to take this time to give you a snapshot of what's been going on in the elementary. So on Thursday, December 1st, our students participated in classroom family pictures. Classrooms dressed in a variety of ways, teachers would ask the kids to either dress in the flannel, Christmas colors, cats and scarves. And Mrs. Montgomery took that day, took the entire day going around our school building, positioning these kids in little Christmas family portraits so the teachers can provide a Christmas card to the families. And so if you haven't had a chance, I know that she created a video and uploaded it to our school website. On December 6th, our teachers opened up their classrooms for a variety of mystery activities. So the teachers had signed up beforehand, but the students didn't know, like, there were just multiple times throughout the day that people kept coming in and, and doing fun little activities, from reading books to just doing, I did a couple dance parties with some of the classes. And it was just a variety of people in the classroom that aren't typically in there, even some students, some of our Aces in Action, which is kind of like the Elementary Student Council. On the 8th, we had a morning that began with a friendly competition of Family Feud, Christmas style. The two winning classes were then invited down to the commons for donuts and milk. During the weekend of December 9th, the elementary staff spent the weekend transitioning the elementary hallways into the classrooms into just a Christmas wonderland. So I don't know if you had the opportunity to walk through the elementary, but it looks amazing each year, it just gets better and better. Again, a huge thanks to Shelley Weatherhead for working with the administration, the custodial staff and the teachers, many, many hours or forth to make that happen. On December 14th, Mrs. Montgomery took over the elementary gym and had an elf-in-training day. Huge thanks to the 21st Century Program, Mr. Farrell and his students. This was a magical experience. Even Mrs. Montgomery's husband took a personal day from school to come dress like that Buddy the Elf. I mean, it was so cute, one of the stations, the kids were doing jumping jacks and they all had jingle bells and I could hear him saying, if you're going to be Santa's elf, you need to jump higher than that. And I mean, they're just, they're just going nuts. 24, there were two 24-foot inflatables in there, one was an F, you know, just a big old slope. It was, it was just, it was awesome. And this week is filled with just fun, filled up dress-up days. However, almost every day there's something special planned. The kids were surprised today, taken to the Bryan Theater where they watched a movie, walked around the square in Bryan. Mr. Polmeyer had some of his choir members that caroled when the kids got off the bus. Tomorrow, we're having a rock and roll Christmas tree party for every class to come down to the gymnasium as well as a raffle for some of these bikes. Again, something that Mrs. Weatherhead has spearheaded with our community. I think there are two bikes per grade level that will be drawn, that will go to a student. Two bikes per grade level as well as backpacks filled with goodies and treats and things like that. On Wednesday, all of our kids will come out here to Santa's workshop to participate in fun-filled activities out here. And then on Friday, Mrs. Stuckey is planning our Christmas program. So I, I just appreciate that our staff understands that there's so much more to school. So I, I just appreciate that our staff understands that, um, there's so much more to school than just academics. It's, it's the building of relationships. It's providing maybe the only Christmas that some of these kiddos are going to get. I mean, it's just a very, very magical time here. It's a very exhausting time. So I truly appreciate our staff and everybody that comes together just to make this an amazing month.
And a huge shout out to many, uh, community members who donated money towards the bike purchases and other things that have been happening inside the school.
Yeah, so a lot of times you see all those donations going to the elementary fund. It's to fund, it's to fund the Christmas stuff that goes on. So.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you for letting us do it.
And I'll call that up too with, um, teachers K through twelve have done an awesome job decorating their doors, the hallways. Um, this being my first year here at Christmas time, it's just awesome to see all the extra time that literally everyone is putting in. The office staff, teachers are all putting in extra time, staying late to do that and truly make it, uh, special for our kids. So that's really cool to see. Uh, middle school report, our seventh eighth grade incentive for second quarter is set now. It'll be Friday, January thirteenth. So as soon to earn that based on good grades, good behavior, we'll be going on a bowling trip to Brian Lanes. Um, I'd like to thank the Wholesale House for their generous donation to make that happen this quarter for junior high students. Uh, middle school and high school student of the quarter lunch then for second quarter is going to be on Thursday, January nineteenth. So as you know, that's where we're able to, um, honor our outstanding students. Each teacher is able to nominate one student to go and have lunch with them, a pizza lunch, and that'll be, um, next month. Um, also like to say job well done to our band students who have held their Christmas concerts over the last couple of weeks, um, under the direction of Mr. Zach Paulmeyer. Our students performed exceptionally well and there's a lot to be proud of with that, within that program. And then finally, uh, for my report, our seventh eighth grade choir will be traveling to the senior center this Thursday, um, to perform for the residents there. They're gonna be performing over the lunch hour, so we're excited to, to have them. It will be.
Is Mrs. Swinn, would you?
Yes, Mrs. Chamberlain, yeah.
Mike, all right, uh, carrying on what they said, I want to point out, um, you know, all the great programming we do. She pointed out the whole district, the decoration, the donation. He pointed out the K twelve, the decorations, the doors and everything. I also want to point out to our K twelve staff, because we also do a Christmas adoption program for our students. And it's quite amazing how many of our staff members are adopting individual students and families throughout the district. And we also want to thank, like Mr. Countryman said, um, like M Co. and Parker Hannifin, the other, uh, businesses and industries in our community that also adopt families. So it, it's been like Christmas every, every day last week and one this week because of families and individual students coming down and, and opening gifts. We want to make this a special time of year. So again, we appreciate everyone on our staff and our community making additional donations there. So events and updates on the high school side. Uh, Thursday, December first, the sophomore visitation to Four County Career Center took place. Uh, this is an annual event that every, every school does, um, in the fall in preparation for, um, application being submitted to Four County. Uh, bringing this up because as you guys know, every year we have about thirty, thirty-five percent of our students go off to Four County Career Center. The last couple of years it's kind of creeped around forty percent. Um, this current sophomore class is a large class. I believe there's eighty-six total students in that class. Eighty-three sophomores are on campus of that eighty-six. And when I was at Four County on Friday, I took a personal day and went over there for a connect meeting, which is the career technical education superintendent meeting they had. Uh, one of the guidance counselors saw me in the building. They, they asked me, the whole school is following the old Four County. And I laughed and said, why? And they said they already had forty-two applicants from Hicksville sophomore class and it's still the early application process. So, um, you know, typically we're trying to get the kids in all the way through Bay. So just FYI, um, if you think about those yellow buses that get through the Four County Career Center, um, they're already full. And I think, uh, the current junior classes are around twenty-eight kids attending Four County. If we get forty more, that's sixty-eight kids on the bus and you start throwing in the I E C kid, yeah, boss, his eyes got big. You throw in the I E C kids and you throw in the autism center kids, you're looking at two buses next year guaranteed, potentially a bus and a half to Four County. So just throwing that out there so you can start thinking about that now because we all know we love transportation, right, boss? Yes.
We're bus riders.
And I spoke to him, sorry, I don't know that too hard. I said, hey, FYI, keep this under radar. Uh, Monday, December fifth, Hicksville volunteer partner, toy drive took place here at Hicksville Schools. Uh, Manny Wyman, our new high school guidance counselor, she headed up that event. It was actually housed in our high school gymnasium. N H S and other volunteers, uh, were here to collect donations, monetary donations and, and gifts that were brought into the commons and dropped off into the, the gymnasium. So we appreciate that. Uh, I know back in the day what we're all used to is Rick Small coming out and doing the remote. Uh, they no longer do that. Uh, it's something that we do miss because it was an awesome event each year. So, um, to, to give you a heads up of where I'm at now with that, uh, Hicksville kind of broke away from that, uh, also. And because they felt that we were going to benefit our communities in Hicksville more if we did our own event and it's been extremely successful. I think this is the third year we've done it as a local event and it's, it's been a great event. So it's exciting for our community. Tuesday, December sixth, Janie Myers, our special education department P E session, uh, obtained I E P writing updates and of course implementation, working with our sped teachers. Um, as you know, Hicksville, um, we do have a, a high number of sped students, roughly eighteen percent, which is, you know, pushing right around two hundred students, honestly. To round it up a little bit, but that's a lot of kids. Um, we do have a lot of sped teachers, but at the same time, we talk about, you know, being compliant with the state and the education of our students and what we try to do is provide the best education possible for all kids. And part of this P E is again, making sure what these students have in their I E P is provided to them. Accommodations, modifications, extended time, all that fun stuff. So it's a, it's a really nice event. Um, on Wednesday, December seventh, uh, graduation requirements and power school training occurred. Uh, that was an interesting day, to say the least. Uh, our E M S coordinator, our power school director, technology director, Jeff Schaefer, Matt Hoffman, um, our guidance counselor, principal and, uh, anxious with our sped director, we all went over to Arch Bowl. All twenty-two partner schools in the Four County area through Milwaukee were provided a training on, you know, typically what the state does is, you know, we, we're flying the plane as they're building it. Uh, with the graduation seals and requirements and everything going on, we're trying to figure out the best practices for the schools to be able to communicate what seals are being earned, how to track these seals, how to register them on transcripts within power school, we report to E M S. Uh, because a lot of that stuff is not fully established yet. And of course you look at the challenge that Four County has, dealing with twenty-two schools and the twenty-two employees that are doing something. So we're trying to find a more uniform process of doing that. Uh, within that process, we also, um, found a lot of coding errors, which were red flagging to E M S. And so we've had to go through and change some coding errors for our classes and courses offered to make sure they're meeting the standards that we are required, uh, to apply towards our students. Uh, meeting, uh, state requirements for graduation. So it was a, it was a very, very productive day. It was a good day. Um, future events, as you guys know, this Friday, December twenty-third, we have a two hour release, uh, so we get out at one P M. Uh, the fall intercourse retakes, uh, for intercourse testing on the high school side, those will be administered, I think, the week of January ninth. Uh, Mrs. Wyman will take, uh, take, uh, control of that. She'll be, uh, administering those tests. And of course, um, you know, Christmas break is coming up. We're all excited for Christmas break. Our students are ready, our staff is ready. And at this time, uh, this is my last board meeting. So, uh, I just want to take the time to say, I want to thank Hicksville, I mean, the community, uh, the school, my peers, like Mr. Hall, Mr. Schaefer, um, the kids, uh, the parents. I mean, it's, it's been awesome. I, I, I know that, you know, I, oh my gosh, I will call you Jen Davis. It's funny. That's hilarious. I've had a blast with that. Of course, you know, Jen and I went to school together and she will tell you, if you go back, you know, twenty-seven years ago, I never thought I'd be a teacher level or a principal or a future superintendent. So it's been a wild ride. But, uh, honestly, uh, a lot of the success that I've had and, and the opportunity that I'm going to, uh, start, uh, my new job after New Year, it's because of what I've learned here. It's because of the, the great opportunities, my mentors, again, challenges we faced, uh, uh, the great times, the good and the bad. I ain't going to miss this place tremendously. I will tell you, November was extremely tough for me. It was like it was starting to set in. Uh, December's been a little bit better for me. I'm excited for the opportunity, but I, I ain't going to miss these kids and, and, and the friendships I've made here at Hicksville. But I, I will say this, I've been lucky enough to sub in multiple schools. I've taught in different school districts. Um, every administrator staff tells their, the people that they work with and their teachers, oh, you're the best staff, you're the best staff. Hicksville really is the best. There's, there's no doubt in my mind from top to bottom. We still can improve. We can still get better. We have our challenges still. But I'm telling you, what we do here is a K twelve building from superintendent to, to middle management, that's a joke, we always call us middle management, down to, uh, the aides, the teachers, the coaches, they've got the kids' best interests in mind and, and that's gonna be hard to leave behind because I, I feel that it, it takes all of us to do it right. And sometimes we don't always feel long and that's okay. Uh, it, it, the fact is, it's Hicksville's awesome. I'm gonna miss it. So thank you for everything. You guys have been great to work for. And I'm not leaving. Remember that I'll still be around, but, uh, I'm gonna miss everyone. So thank you.
Thanks. Uh, anything for the Four County Career Center report?
Yes, I do. Um, so Tim Meister, the current superintendent, um, last Thursday was his last meeting. He is going into retirement now. Um, also Syndra, the, uh, Four County rep from Brian, she was the board president. She also retired. She'll get a replacement at the next meeting. And then as Jeff just said, around Jeff Slattery is gonna be the new superintendent over at Four County. So congratulations to him and good luck.
Thank you. Keith, superintendent.
Yes, sir. Um, I know I've mentioned this before, but I just wanted to throw it back out there and give a shout out to the sheriff's office deputy Hall. He used to do the dare program here at Hicksville. He is actually an S R O officer force now one day a week. So that is a, uh, is funded through the sheriff's office, a grant that they did. And each, uh, school in the county gets the use of deputy Hall one day a week. And it's always a random day. So we never, you know, we, we never know which day he's gonna be here, but we're thankful for the sheriff's office providing that for us. And I know that it was great having deputy Hall here for that. Alan East, the school that had worked with Jeff, uh, came here to the school here with a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, and visited, uh, Hicksville. Their objective was to find out how we get the scores we get and to also talk to us a little bit about the Hicksville initiative and how that works and, and what we did to start it up and, and how that had an effect on, on our scores and stuff in the school and, and just our overall performance of here, here at Hicksville. It was a great visit. They were really excited and I know that Jeff spent a lot of time with them that day. It's always great to have people come in and we can brag about our school and the great things and great programs that we have going here. So thanks for lining that up, Jeff.
Mr. Countryman, can I interject on that one? It was amazing. I just thought of a great aspect is, is I love, I love these questions when we talk to these other districts. Because when I talk about the things we do here, whether it's the culture, the climate, or it's the test prep, or it's the, you know, all hands on deck, one-on-one, you know, small group final core, I E P readings, bringing in subs, bringing in our sped teachers, they all ask the same question. How do you get your staff to do that? How do you get your staff to do that? I don't understand. How do you get away with this? And it's literally, it's because we all have the same goal. That's why I mean, that's what makes our staff so good. I hear all the other schools and struggles that they have trying to get their staff on board and, and we, we don't have to do that. So sorry if I didn't say that.
No, that's perfect. That's perfect. That's what separates us, right? Uh, we also had, um, I had our monthly Four County superintendent meeting and, um, every quarter we have a business advisory council meeting that goes along with that meeting. And this particular month, uh, it was time for our business advisory council meeting. And we actually had it at Stryker Schools. And, uh, Stryker Schools has a similar, uh, program. They've been doing it a lot longer than us, so they're a little bit farther down the road than us. And, uh, it was really interesting to, uh, see some of the, uh, programs and projects and different things that they were working on in their STEAM or Ag Center that they have over there. Uh, we followed that up with, um, our regular superintendent meeting and we had that in that, in that building as well. Also wanted to mention that I recently posted a P R position for here at the school as a very, very, very part-time position. Uh, with the paper no longer going to be published here in Hicksville. Uh, I wanted to have an opportunity where we could highlight the great things and great programs and students and teachers and different things that are happening here. Uh, and so I'm looking for a person on staff that can fill this position where they'll, uh, we'll develop it as we go. But it's to promote our school and to, uh, advertise and show parents and keep, keep the community informed of our programs and different things that we have going here. So hopefully by the next board meeting, I'll have hired someone, um, for that spot. And then I just wanted to mention again that Jeff already said it, that it's his last meeting here and, uh, you know, a huge shout out to Jeff for the last, uh, nine years, Jeff?
It would be ten, you know, like March sixth or something like that, so not like ten.
Yep. So I, uh, really enjoyed working with Jeff and I can honestly say that, uh, when I spoke to him ten years ago and explained my vision for the district and what I was looking for and he didn't hesitate to jump in. He's never looked back and he's done an excellent job. And I know, you know, we really appreciate everything you've done, Jeff. I know you're gonna do great at Four County Career Center and I'll still see you monthly at our meetings because you'll be one of my peers now. So, uh, um, if you talk about superintendents in the state, there's only six hundred and some of us. And often there's things that I don't share with my advocacy because you have your group that, that you have. So you'll still be part of my group, Jeff, so just in a different capacity. Enjoy having with here. You've been a nice one, Jeff. Thank you for that. Thank you.
So I just want to say, I think your mission, your plan, it's a very happy night, Jeff. You have done an amazing job of moving us forward and making changes. And I think the school is in a better place now than it was before. You've done it. So thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to be the hometown guy in a district. And I appreciate you being able to do that, do all the mess, all the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Thank you, Jeff. Need a motion to, uh, revest some financials, please?
Okay.
This is Jen. This is Eric. Minutes from the regular board meeting on November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Treasurers consent agenda items. Cash reconciliation is of November thirty, twenty twenty-two. Financial statements of November twenty twenty-two. Approved amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year twenty twenty-three as presented. Total general fund resources of fifteen million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred three dollars and sixty cents. And total resources for all funds of twenty million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty cents. Approved amended fiscal year twenty twenty-three permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of twelve million, three hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. And total appropriations for all funds of fifteen million, four hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Approved resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Resolution to reinstate the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, four hundred fifty-seven deferred compensation plan. Accept the following donations. Fifty dollars from Ken Sailor Memorial for athletic fund, one hundred and fifty dollars from M Co. for elementary principal fund, three hundred dollars from Main Street Studio for elementary principal fund. Any comments or questions on any of that?
I would like to, to mention that the, uh, four fifty-seven for out plan, which we've had in place for a number of years. But, uh, just to update that plan, along with that update, gives some additional options or, or tools available for staff for, uh, parents for their retirement and building their future wealth. Um, also wanted to mention in a recent house bill that passed, uh, hasn't gone across the governor's desk yet, but it appears though disadvantaged people impact, the P I A funding. Uh, last year, the basin of that was at zero. Last year, the phase in of that was at 0%. They plan on with this house bill that we currently have in place for clear school funding plan, to fund it in over a period of time. Last year was 0% of the phase in. This year was expected to be 14% and they've decided to increase that to 33.3%. How that's going to look in the long run, I'm not sure. I have a training scheduled for January 4th that will discuss that. But either way, it's a good thing that it's looking, that they will fund that DPIA at a higher percentage than what they were expecting, you know, just a week ago. Also, last month, we talked a little bit about the school safety grant that we were denying in our application. It's something that Mr. Eric Vassett worked really hard to be able to provide additional safety measures for our district. Well, this house bill 45 included additional $112 million for schools that have not received it yet. So I would think, hopefully, we've got a good chance to be able to go forward with the work that we put together and the ideas to increase the safety awareness in our students, of course. It also made some changes to CRAs. About the details, not out on that, but community reinvestment area, they'll have a lot to go into that. They did make some changes regarding that. And that is what I have unless you have questions.
Thanks as always for bringing us the details.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Need a motion for employment certified staff, please. Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Amanda. Recommend to approve Aaron Highlander as high school principal beginning January 1, 2023 and ending July 31, 2025. Shout out to Aaron. I would say welcome aboard, but they're already here, so.
Way to jump in.
Big shoes to fill, but nothing important for him.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Need another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Anthony Tier as interim middle school principal beginning January 1, 2023 and ending July 31, 2023.
I'm confident that Tony, Tony or Aaron?
Just Tony.
Tony is going to do a great job for us. I'm looking forward to working with him. And I told him, I said, you'll know by March if you want to be in our administration. And so he's not, also has a big shooting to go up there. But he's worked very well with Eric since the beginning of the years, years of school. Excited to have Tony on our team.
Excited to start.
Is Tony going to fresh out basketball season?
Yes.
On a tear.
Got to keep it rolling, Jen.
Jumping in all busy time.
All right, welcome. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Amanda. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve the resignation from Robin Chamberlain as district mentor. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022, 2023 school year. Sandy Brown, district mentor. Emily Reeves, district mentor. Stacy Wagner, co-chair advisor, seven and eight. Roll call? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion for employment and classified staff.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Amanda. Recommend to approve a $150 per occurrence stipend to John Adams and Eric Vassett for snow removal during non-school hours.
I don't want to change anything.
It's coming, boys.
Maybe it'll, maybe it'll change a little bit. I know I speak for John and Eric both when I say that they too hope that the snow misses us. So it's not like they want to come here at 2 o'clock in the morning to get things opened up and stuff in time for us in the morning. But well, even sometimes they come at midnight and they'll start at midnight. So appreciative of them doing that. They always do an excellent job of having things sorted and ready for us to roll in the mornings.
Roll call? Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero. In the old business, we'd like to discuss. Yeah, it's at the veranda. Okay. Need a motion for our then, which is the last page of the agenda if anybody got it.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to appoint Eric Vedder as four county board of education representative effective January 1, 2023 to replace Dennis Vedder, who will resign December 31, 2022.
We typically do that at our January meeting, but I believe your meeting, Eric, is before we have our meeting. So just to be official, doing it this way.
Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, roll call? Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder abstaining and Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries four, zero, with one abstention. You can vote for yourself. Any executive session? Motion to adjourn?
What are we doing? Are we doing?
Oh, yeah, the next meeting. Good call.
Wednesday?
Yeah, that's what we said.
It'll be a different day. Yes. Yeah, last month while we talked about it.
Wednesday, did you?
Talked about it. I think we're agreeing to hammer it out.
Is that bad for you?
I mean, you can have a meeting without me, but.
Is Tuesday better?
Yes.
I'm getting the matter of.
We have to have it done by the 15th, which is why we were going.
I mean, I don't, to be quite honest, I don't look for the agenda to be very heavy. So if you want to just leave it on the 11th, it's just that I'm RCA with the new employees that day. I don't, I mean, I don't.
I'm okay. I'm okay.
You okay with that? I mean, our agendas have been really short lately, so with the holidays and everything, it could be very quick.
Right, because we're going to only have two weeks of school.
Exactly. Are you okay with that, Mike?
On the 11th?
Yeah, I just want to be here.
So what day is that?
Wednesday.
Today? Okay, so. We'll be adjourned this meeting until Wednesday, January the 11th at 5:30. Yes.
I'll move.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thanks, Amanda. Thanks, Jim. Roll call? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero.